Executive Committee of the Spokane NAACP. I'm going to be your host and moderator today. We're happy that you can join us in this virtual space. But before we begin, we want to acknowledge that every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hopes of a better life, and some have lived on this land since time immemorial. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage indifference. So we begin this morning acknowledging that we are on ancestral lands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians and the multitude of tribes who are connected through shared history of trade, celebration, and resources. We make this acknowledgement to pay respects to their elders, past and present, whose knowledge remains on the land. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that brings us together here today. And please join us in continuing to learn about such truths and action that we can take forward, take towards restorative justice. The Spokane Coalition of Color consists of the Asian and Pacific Islander Coalition, APEC, Spokane Chapter, Spokane Branch of the NAACP, the Hispanic Business Professional Association, known as HPPA, and Muslim Community Action and Support, known as MCAS. The mission of S C O C is to build stronger, healthier, and equitable communities by valuing all ethnicities through the spirit of friendship. Before we get any further, we have Frances, who will do a quick tutorial on Zoom for our audience.
Hello, everyone. I am Frances Martell of APEC Spokane. I will be managing the behind the scenes of the, of the candidate forum with the other S C O C members. Stacey Wells, Ryan Louis, and Reina Pinada. So click Zoom 101. As a virtual attendee in this candidate forum, at the bottom of your screen, you will see three buttons. The chat, Q and A, and live transcript. Currently, the chat button has been disabled for all attendees. So if you have any webinar and technology concerns or questions for the candidates, please use the Q and A button. For accessibility, please click on the live transcript button where you will find options to view the full transcript or enable the live captions. Thank you.
All right. Well, we're going to welcome our candidates for the Spokane Valley City Council. Today with us, we have Mr. James J.J. Johnson, Mr. Ben Wick, Mr. Brandon Fenton, Ms. Pam Haley, and Ms. Linda Thompson. I think today we have Ms. Linda Thompson and Mr. J.J. Johnson and Mr. Ben Wick. And I believe we're waiting for a few others to hop on. We did invite all candidates for the Spokane Valley City Council. Mr. Rod Higgins and Ms. Laura Patton sent their regrets as they have other commitments and couldn't join us today. We reached out to Mr. Wayne Fenton, but unfortunately, we did not hear back. All right. Candidates will be answering questions posed by me. We want to honor your time and the candidate's time by finishing on time. We will make every effort to get to questions from the audience. We hope that once we are finished, you will feel that you have a better understanding of where each candidate stands in relations to the issues that are most important to people of color in our community and our community in general. Each candidate has two minutes to introduce themselves and make their opening statements. Following the opening statements, each candidate will be asked the same four questions, and each one will have one minute to answer each question. I may ask a follow-up question. We will take questions from the audience. Audience should, should pose their questions on the Q and A button, which can be found at the bottom of your screen. Audience members can choose to direct their questions to specific candidates. After the last question, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. We have Ms. Nicole Rosenkrantz, who is our timekeeper. She will raise a card giving you a 30-second warning, then a whistle to stop your time. Let's not use that whistle. We encourage civic engagement and dialogue between people with different points of view. Please be respectful of each other. Audience members who exhibit disruptive behavior will be removed. Before we pose our questions to candidates, we want to start by reviewing the roles of the city council. There are seven members of the Spokane Valley City Council. All positions are at-large positions. The city council has legislative authority. It is responsible for setting policies and for approving the city's budget. The city council hires the city manager, who is responsible for implementing its policies. Biennially, at the first meeting of the new council, the members choose a chair from among their fellow council members. The chair of the council has the title of mayor and presides at meetings of the council. The mayor is the regular member of the city council. We want to now ask the candidates to provide an opening statement. Each candidate has two minutes for their opening statement. The first question. How have you prompted equity, inclusion, and cultural humility in your life? I will start in the order of Mr. J.J. Johnson.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm J.J. Johnson. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to explain why I'm your choice for position one on the Spokane Valley City Council. In 2017, I applied to serve my hometown as a director on the Spokane County Human Rights Task Force, representing the Spokane Valley. From the instant the mayor of Spokane Valley told me I'd been selected, before I began working with the other directors, even before my nomination was unanimously approved by the Spokane Valley City Council, I thought that perhaps I'd been chosen for some hidden agenda. I think there were others in the community who felt the same way. Yes, I had ethnic diversity in my life as an adult, had learned value of differing opinions, differing viewpoints, differing cultures. That is why I applied. But growing up in what is now the city of Spokane Valley can provided a lot of diversity experience. The directors on the task force had spent a bulk of their lives fighting for human rights. They had victories and unfortunate defeats, but all had evolved from those. What was I doing here? What could I bring to this courageous group? I fell out of place. I remembered. Years in my youth of after-school and summer camps at Holy Trinity Lutheran Church had instilled these lessons from the son of the carpenter. Accept those around me for who they are. Love everyone for what they bring to our community. Not judge. That last lesson, not judge, that's the most difficult to practice, right? As I became more and more a part of the task force team, I realized it didn't matter what hidden agenda the mayor had for selecting me, that we all can fight for human rights as long as we have a passion to see our brothers and sisters thrive. Yes, we need to accept, love, and not judge. And we need one other important thing. We must have the courage to speak up against the ignorance of preconception, not to accuse, for that involves passing judgment, but to simply fill the hole some may have that limits the understanding of equality and equity.
Okay, Nicole had to use the whistle. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'm going to restate the question for Mr. Ben Wick. How have you prompted equity, inclusion, and cultural humility in your life?
All right, I'll start a little bit of some of my background. So I'm Ben Wick, born, raised, city of Spokane Valley, actually, fourth generation valley native, where my great-grandfather had a dairy farm, where Sprague and then ideas now, which he lost during the Great Depression, but my family was here before the state formed. So very proud of, of being here for a long time and very committed to our community. Also, a small business owner in the community recently. I'm in my second term right now on the city council. And for the last two years, I've had the pleasure of serving as the Spokane Valley Mayor. So not the same mayor that Mr. Johnson was just talking about, but a different mayor for the last two years. Have four wonderful children going through the East Valley School District, who are under the years, nine years old. And have a lovely wife, Dana, which I couldn't do as much without. Promoting equity and inclusion has been one of trying to bring understanding and involvement and kind of getting to know each other. When I was at Eastern, I served on the student council, and we tried to come up with ways where we could fund different activities and get involved in different events. I know that through the different cultural events, and I actually heard some wise words from somebody else, which I can't remember where exactly I've heard this, but everybody can come together for food. And so I know it was, it was really amazing. I've been through trying to encourage events at college and also in our community locally, where we promoted cultural diversity, but cultural events, trying to bring us together as a community, and also trying to fight back against hate and remove those signs of hate to try and be a more tolerant community. And I appreciate the, the time today and look forward to talking more.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wick. And Ms. Thompson, how are you today? And I'll pose the question to you as well. How have you prompted equity, inclusion, and cultural humility in your life?
So I have had a lot of opportunity to work on equity, inclusion, and cultural humility, knowing myself, understanding my own culture. It's about learning about other, other folks, and I have had great opportunities in my work as a substance abuse and violence prevention nonprofit director. My first work was in the early 90s, working with the disproportionality of youth of color in our juvenile justice system with, working with Tony Lodge, Diane Jackson, and others to look at how we could help our kids not go into that system to prevent things. And so worked on funding through our community organizing grants, effective black parenting, some youth education recreation engagement, partnering with the East Central Community Center. That's when I met Frieda Gandy, when she was at the MLK Center, when she was just a brand-new kindergarten teacher, just having graduated out of college. And then looking at, at when we'd worked on our gang issues, looking at the number of Asian kids who were susceptible to gangs, and often it was their parents were struggling because there was a language barrier and working with the faith community in that, in that group to help them get more education about that. On the city council, I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Association of Washington Cities and have brought my work in, in cultural diversity and inclusion to the council. And one of the things we have done is to, I've tried to introduce real race equity and leadership training, and with several council members, we've tried to move that forward. One of the things I have done with the education, city council members can get a municipal leadership certificate, and now we have five credit hours required out of the 30 credit hours. It must be cultural diversity and inclusion training. So we've integrated education of this into our accreditation.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. We will now ask each of you four predetermined questions. Each candidate has one minute to answer each question. As a reminder, Nicole is our timekeeper. I may ask follow-up questions, and responses are limited to one minute per candidate. Should you be elected to the city council? How would you provide leadership in the enforcement of public health mandates to protect the safety of Spokane Valley citizens and businesses? Many of the small businesses in Spokane Valley are owned by people of color, and they are put in the middle of enforcing the state's public health mandates. This can end up being dangerous, as in specific cases, when a Pakistani convenience store owner, who is an American citizen, helped intervene when two customers refused to comply with the mask mandates and assaulted an employee on their way out. While physical altercations are thankfully rare, verbal assaults are an almost daily occurrence. If customers don't comply, small business owners are faced with receiving a fine from the Health Department and putting themselves and their employees and their customers in harm's way. So I'll repeat the question. Should you be elected to the city council? How would you provide leadership in the enforcement of public health mandates to protect the safety of the Spokane Valley citizens and businesses? Order of responses, I will start with you, Ms. Thompson.
Okay, great. So this is a very difficult, very difficult situation. I myself have been called the sheep because I am wearing my mask out in public, and so I, and that's just a tiny fraction of what our business owners are going through. I, I think what is most important is that we protect the safety of our business owners and those who are trying to follow the mask mandate. And I will, I had not, I gotta, I have to tell you, I haven't really thought about what we could do, but I think it's important that we post the policy and ask that people comply, but not put anyone at risk by confrontation and be prepared when customers are having a confrontation to have procedures to step employees or other customers back to protect everyone. But I, I will actually pursue this more and think of, of more things we could do, working with our law enforcement and, and figure out how to help our businesses.
Thank you. All right. In the next order, we have Mr. Wick, and I'll repeat the question. Should you be elected to the city council? How would you provide leadership in the enforcement of public health mandates to protect the safety of the Spokane Valley citizens and businesses?
Sure. So one of the things that we also do as city council members is we're actually on the regional Board of Health. So we have two members of our city council, which will be representatives on the Board of Health. So it's working with Dr. Velazquez, our health officer. We're very happy to have, working for our region, was trying to make sure that all the policies are fairly and equitably applied across the all businesses, not picking any one sector or, or different winners and losers in that aspect, but also trying to come up with an understanding and share and get people to realize that none of us really enjoy wearing masks, but we have to to help keep our community going, keep our community open, keep our kids in schools, keep our businesses open. We're doing this for each other. And it's just trying to keep emphasizing that and, and reaching out to those to, to share that compassion and, and understanding for everybody.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Johnson, I will repeat the question. Should you be elected to the city council? How would you provide leadership in enforcement of public health mandates to protect the safety of the Spokane Valley citizens and businesses?
Thank you. You know, years ago, there was a health mandate, no shirt, no shoes, no service. It was inconvenient at times, but people realized fairly quickly that that was a reasonable request. No shirt, no shoes, no service. Now there are a lot of individuals who are concerned that they're losing their freedom because they have to wear a mask. Now, we have a lot of regulations in our society that protect us. We have stop signs at the end of the road, stoplights, speed limits. Those are all regulations intended to protect us. This is not about losing freedom. This is about being part of a society. How we would enforce it becomes difficult. I'm hoping that there is enough education and enough to quell the misinformation that we don't have to get to a point where we need real strict enforcement.
Thank you for that, Mr. Johnson. All right, we're going to shift gears a little bit. So the next question, question number two. In the Spokane Valley city budget for 2021, the Housing and Affordable and Supportive Housing Fund has accumulated over 300,000 with none of the money being allocated. Meanwhile, the city spends over 28 million on public safety services, which inevitably are used to interact with people who are unhoused. The question, considering the massive discrepancy on city spending between housing and public safety, what will you do as a council member to provide stable housing for people in our city who need it most? In the order of this questions, I'm going to start with Mr. Ben Wick.
So I guess I'm not familiar with what budget item we think we have for housing. Traditionally, for housing, we've been doing more of, and what planning needs to happen, how we can zoning to encourage different housing. But we're not really in the business of doing housing. I know we, we set aside some state funds to try and look at how we can help do more affordable housing. But we're going through our housing action plan and trying to figure out what is the most efficient method for that. Housing is an issue. It's, it's an issue within our city, within our region. Absolutely. We need to find ways of providing more, more housing, more affordable housing, and diverse housing, which we've been trying to do through legislative efforts and, and regional partnerships, but again, we're trying to figure out what's the best way to help influence housing.
Okay, thank you. And next I have Mr. Johnson, and I'll repeat the question. Considering the massive discrepancy of city spending between housing and public safety, what will you do as a council member to provide stable housing for people in our city who needs it most?
Well, we definitely don't want to be doing anything to cut public safety. It's, it's definitely one of our prime concerns. And we need to make sure that we maintain or maybe even increase that level of safety for our citizens. One of the things that we can do, however, is push harder on the state to retract many of the onerous condominium regulations that we have. Recently, there was a change in the law, but it only impacted a very small percentage of home possibilities. We need to be able to be building condominiums, multi-level condominiums that will provide low-income or, or affordable housing for individuals so that they can get into the housing market. We need cottages. We need to be able to take advantage of our available space as best we can so that people can get in and find affordable housing, and there isn't such a rent pressure.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Johnson. All right, and Ms. Thompson, I will repeat the question for you. Considering the massive discrepancy of city spending between housing and public safety, what will you do as council member to provide stable housing for people in our city who needs it most?
So we do have a very large public safety budget because we are a contract city and we contract for all of our police and criminal justice services. In housing, we did with the CARES Act, we supported renters and some utilities and some housing support through the nonprofits that we partnered with. We do not have a, an, an actual housing department, but I am concerned and, and, and looking at what we can do with the money that's going to come, the ARPA funds, which I can't remember what ARPA stands for, but looking at those who are renting and those who are, are purchasing, how to help, help folks stay in their homes and then try to find more affordable housing for everyone because it's just gotten, housing is scarce and it's very hard to find. I have one friend who is a, a disabled veteran, whose rent was just increased 30 by $30 a month, and she is having to decide, will she take her medication or pay her rent? That is unacceptable in our city. I'll work on this issue.
And so I do have a follow-up question for the candidates. People who have been incarcerated but have now served their sentences find it nearly impossible to gain housing of any kind, even if they have the funds to purchase or rent such housing. What would you do as a solution to this issue and why? And I'll start with you, Ms. Thompson.
Did you say me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, one of the things we have done in my work over the years is we have worked to get the vote back for those who have served. We have worked on making sure families could get food stamps and other support while one of their family members was imprisoned. I think that we have got to look at whatever the issue is that is specifically something we can change in policy, either, and, and most likely that's at the state level. If it is just a matter of discrimination, we need to be working with our, our landlords and, and, and banks. Banks obviously cannot discriminate, but we've got to figure out what the root cause of those denials are and take that on as a policy issue.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, you are next. I'll repeat the question. People who have been incarcerated but now have served their sentences find it nearly impossible to gain housing of any kind, even if they have the funds to purchase or rent such housing. What would you do in this situation? Or a solution to this issue and why?
That's a, it's a difficult problem to try and be out there whenever there's discrimination. You know, when individuals make a mistake, none of us are perfect. And if an individual has made the mistake and yet been accountable, held accountable, and paid their price, they should be able to move on. This would be something that I would definitely consider as a problem. I'm not sure exactly the answer, but I would definitely be very interested to hear solutions from anyone. If this group might have a solution, I'll listen. That's one thing we need to be able to do, and that's talk to each other. And it doesn't matter which side of the political spectrum an individual is on. If you've got a solution for a problem, let's get together. Let's find what will make a difference and implement it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And Mr. Ben Wick, you're next. I'll repeat the question. People who have been incarcerated but have now served their sentences find it nearly impossible to gain housing of any kind, even if they have the funds to purchase or rent such housing. What would be your solution to this issue and why?
Sure. So, so similar to what Mr. Johnson was, was talking about, is trying to get more connected and more information as to how and what their experience and what some of the details are. Now, in the past, I had the opportunity to sit on the, the board for SNAP or spoken, they were the action partners, which one of their programs was trying to help connect those kind of individuals to housing and getting back, re-entered into the community again. So I'd like to learn a little bit more, maybe sit down, have a conversation to see what, what some of those details are. But overall, we need more opportunity for more housing. It's not just that group. It's all groups that are having challenges right now, finding housing or being able to buy a house. I mean, when the, when the housing market sells housing within hours, you know, we don't have enough. And so it's looking at trying to figure out how we can expand the urban growth areas, get more land in for developers to be able to build housing and get housing back on track. As a city, we've actually permitted more development last year than in the history of our city. We've already beat that record at the end of July this year. So we're growing very rapidly. Thank you.
Okay. And I have an additional follow-up question. Affordable housing and accessible housing for people with disabilities even more difficult to find in this area than with the general population. What would be some possible solutions to this issue? And I'll start with you, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I think Mayor Wick brought in the agency that's going to make a difference here. Hopefully, we can take some of our federal funding that we're coming in and see if we can get SNAP a little bit more well-funded, maybe a little bit more able to handle this kind of thing so that they can address those kinds of problems. There's, it's pretty frustrating as an individual to not be able to find a home that is comfortable for you. And it doesn't matter whether you're a person with a disability or a person of color, or a person with limited funding. There needs to be opportunities, and as a city, we need to be aggressively finding those and making those available.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. Next, Ms. Thompson, I will repeat the question. Affordable and accessible housing for people with disabilities is even more difficult to find in this area than in general population. What would be some possible solutions to this issue?
I think one of the solutions would be bringing those who have worked on accessible and affordable housing to the table and talking about what has worked in the past and what we can replicate and working with those who are, are building multifamily housing and and working with those who are are building multifamily housing and as well as access accessible housing. As our population grows, we are going to see more folks with disabilities as our elders, the number of elders in our community expand and needing to make sure that we have affordable and safe homes for them. I think it's something we've got to talk about as a community, but I know the resources and the expertise is out there that we can bring in and talk about what we can do. So very much willing to listen to that and think about solutions that we can move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And same question for you, Mr. Wick. Affordable and accessible housing for people with disabilities is even more difficult to find in this area than the general population. What would be some possible solutions to this issue?
You know, I again, kind of coming back to, there's a lot of nonprofit partners out there. And I don't know that everybody is fully aware of all that are out there. I know we give some assistance to widows might, which helps in certain instances with minor home repair. SNAP does minor home repair. Valley Partners, I believe, has a connection to do some of those improvements to households to try and keep people in their house or help make it better accessible for those. So I think it's trying to get and connect people together so that way they know the resources that are out there and help promote that side of it. As far as a building code goes, we're very much tied to the state building code. And there's been a lot of changes in that building code, which have put a lot more cost into housing, which is negatively impacting this right now. So we need to be aware, be advocates in that process.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. All right, we are shifting gears a little bit again. So the next question, question number three. Spokane County will will be welcoming Afghans who will be joining our community. Some of them will likely be settling in Spokane Valley. What will you do to make Spokane Valley a welcoming place for them and other people of color? I will start questions with Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. You know, several years ago, there was an attack in Christchurch, New Zealand. And it had followed an attack on in Pittsburgh. It was amazing how our community came together after those two incidents. The help. I'm expecting that same kind of thing to happen again. I remember leaving the mosque after the Christchurch incident and talking to Sheriff Ozzy about how we needed to bring our community together before there was a problem. So that when there was a problem, everyone was tied together. Everyone could respond quickly. Everyone knew what to do. That's what we need to do for situations like this, to make sure that these our new neighbors can find a welcoming home, can find the diversity that they're used to from their home community and integrate smoothly and seamlessly into Spokane Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, next I have Mr. Wick, same question. What will you do to make Spokane Valley a welcoming place for the Afghans and other people of color?
I think this comes down to, we've been trying to support a lot of cultural celebrations and cultural events to get to know each other better and get to know the different cultures. So I'd be looking forward to kind of working with those that put those different events on that the city sponsor to include more of that Afghanistan culture. I have no idea what if there's different food from Afghanistan, but that's kind of exciting as well to try and figure out what's what's new there that we can experience and help share that with our kids. Right? Expose it to the next generation so that we can even move forward even more so as well. And I've actually, as mayor, I've had a number of businesses reach out that say, hey, help me get connected to those individuals that are coming here because we have jobs for them. We want them to help get a part of the community and provide them the ability to get to work. And so it's an opportunity looking forward.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. And finally, Ms. Thompson, the same question. What will you do to make Spokane Valley a welcoming place for them and other people of color?
So we will continue, well, I will say I will continue to advocate for all people to be welcomed in our community. We have done some good work with reaffirming our statement of inclusion and and really being welcoming to all and and opportunities for folks to get involved with our city on committees and different things. But it really, I believe, takes individuals, reaching out to individuals. I know that there is an opportunity with the the centers to be able to go in and and experience prayer and time with different folks of religions and different faiths and and figure out how we can find our common ground. You know, other than the indigenous people who lived in this land, we are all immigrants. My grandmother came from Norway and was welcomed in. And I feel that that is the heritage I have to offer to others is to welcome them in. They're coming from very harsh, harsh situation and we should do what we can do to make everyone welcome. And I will make that commitment myself.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. All right. Now, if a conflict should arise with other council members, how will you continue to advocate and fight for communities of color? I will start with you, Mr. Johnson.
If a conflict should arise, you know, I kind of am one of those individuals who doesn't shy away from conflict. I believe conflict is one of those things that are necessary in order to the discussion out. It needs to be done in a respectful manner. But the facts are what the facts are. And as long as we are dealing with the facts, not with rhetoric, not with political innuendo, I expect that there's going to be conflicts, but I have absolutely no problem having a respectful conversation. That's how a community moves forward. You have differing opinions. Both opinions are presented in a respectful way. And you move forward with a resolution, a solution that works for everybody as best you can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Thompson, I'll move to you. Same question. If a conflict should arise with other council members, how will you continue to advocate and fight for communities of color?
Well, this is actually what I have been doing since I got on council, trying to bring the race equity and leadership aspects of training, looking at how we can be inclusive, advocating of being a voice for inclusion, whether it be people of color or transgender folks or the LGBT community, whoever it is, it's it's we want to be a welcoming community where people feel they belong. And just as Congressman Lewis said, be bold, be strong in your voice, address what is wrong and keep going. And all we can do is continue to speak our truth. And our council really has worked well together. We have conflicts, yes. But in the end, we have to think of the bigger picture of inclusion and valuing all people in our community. So I will continue to speak up and be bold because I I think it's just one of the most important things to have in a community is that everyone feels they belong.
Okay, and Mr. Wick, you do have that same question. If a conflict should arise with other council members, how will you continue to advocate and fight for communities of color?
Sure, we have had some some conflicts, but it's usually about the approach. I think we can find a lot of common ground in what we're trying to accomplish. And so I'm confident that we can figure out a way to move forward as a council. But also as a council is a subset of what we are truthfully in the community. There's a lot of times where I represent myself or Spokane Valley just as an individual council member. And you can go off and and help advocate for those kinds of things, whether it's welcoming a group or welcoming the community or being out in the community as an individual or the number of boards that we're on. I mean, I'm the chair of the Regional Transportation Board, where I welcome the native tribes onto the board for the first time or on the Health District. And there's just a myriad of different ways that we can be involved outside of council as well that are just as impactful. So continue to be that voice on on all boards individually.
All right, thank you all for those questions. Now we're going to turn to questions from the audience. So Marina and Francis will monitor. Each candidate has one minute to answer each of the questions from the audience. All right, and I will. I'm sorry, bear with me as we're pulling up the questions from the audience. All right, for JJ. For others, Mr. Higgins, during his term on the council through emails and open interviews, expressed a desire to end the current law enforcement contract with the sheriff and start a police department under the control of the council. What are your thoughts on this? Starting with Mr. Johnson.
You know, first of all, I would not be interested in such a change. It would make no sense financially. But there are some contractual issues we want to make sure that we address when we next have an opportunity, but starting our own police force would be extremely expensive. I think we need to boil down to the reason why Mr. Higgins might want to make this change. Sheriff Knessovich is not like domestic terrorists. He has spoken out against the domestic terrorist that Mr. Higgins has apologized for in attempts to normalize. I believe that that's the reason why Mr. Higgins would like to make that change. It has nothing to do with the betterment of the city of Spokane Valley.
Okay, thank you for that. Would me, one else like to comment on that or? Mr. Wick, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Linda. Okay. So the as JJ said, there's a significant investment in public safety, whether it's the cars or the personnel or the training. We have a great partnership right now with Spokane County Sheriff's Office for the deputies that we have or the officers that we have. And but we can continue to enhance that. We want to make sure that they have the right tools. Where recently the county couldn't afford to replace the police cars in a timely manner. So we've stepped up as a community to do that. We have continued to find ways where we took our school resource officers and redeployed them to trails and safety. We can continue to work together as a region and a community and and continue to enhance that public safety contract without having to just start around at this point.
And and this is Linda. I I can continue on with what Ben was saying. We've also added mental health professionals writing with our law enforcement officers to free up our officers to address other other issues of in the community. And I think as we shift towards looking at how we can help people with the issues that are really at 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 the root of what's happening rather than locking people up and and punishing people who need mental health help or need resources to help them get what they need to to have in order to to address the situations they're in. As we see so many issues with domestic violence and and you know, just all kinds of things happening in our community, the more we can be compassionate through our law enforcement efforts, the better. I am for keeping our contact with the sheriff's office. It's a it's a force multiplier to have all those other resources along with our scope volunteers who are incredible help to our community.
Okay, thank you all. The next question, and this is for all three candidates. What would it take for Spokane Valley to pursue a housing-first policy, which has been proven to be the most effective strategy to address chronic homelessness? And we'll start with Mr. Wick first.
Homelessness is a very complicated issue. I've actually been meeting with Mayor Woodward and Commissioner Cooney every other week for the last year or more to try and figure out how we can best address homelessness and try and find some solutions there. We've identified next step housing or second phase or or how you can transition people better. And so we've we've started to build some of those assets. We started our first young adult shelter. We're actually able to get a competitive grant to help facilitate that, which is going to be opening soon. The Way Out Shelter is another one that we're trying to do, but you need the wraparound services for mental health and different things and assistance for them to to kind of end that cycle of homelessness. And it's a complicated issue. We're we're working to address it and get it going on.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Thompson?
Yes, I think that we do not have a specific housing department at our city, so we work on a regional effort with everyone. But we do have April and Ariel Anderson, who is our homeless outreach person. And she is is really so good in what she does and connects with other resources and nonprofits and looking at housing. We may evolve to that. At this point, you know, it's it's a new thing. We've had April on, I think, not even quite a year yet. And we need to look at the most effective way. We are linking folks with resources. And and even if it's just getting an ID card to be able to move into services, April is just doing a great job with partners across this region. And so I think that we can look at how we can move forward and what processes we want to move into to helping to address chronic homelessness. It's a huge issue for our community, but we're doing all we can right now and looking at the possibilities in the future.
Okay, and Mr. Johnson, same question.
You know, there's a a lot of people in our community who are under the misconception that homelessness issue is because we're drawing people from other areas. The data that I've seen shows that eighty percent or more of the homeless people in our area are locals. They are individuals who, for one reason or another, have come under some hard times and lost their home. They're veterans. I'm one of those very fortunate individuals who didn't even have to register right after the Vietnam War. I owe our veterans a gratitude that I can never repay. We need to be doing what we can in a regional, finding regional solution. And it really does, for a large part, come down to mental health. Ariel is a great start. Making sure that she has the tools that she needs, making sure that she has the connections that she needs to do what she needs to do. But we also need to be working as a region and finding a solution to this chronic problem. I beat the whistle.
Thank you for that, Mr. Johnson. And the next question. What leadership could you provide to help bring an end to hate towards minorities that continues to rise? Mr. Johnson, we'll start with you.
Well, I'm fortunate to be on the Spokane County Human Rights Task Force, and we have actually developed an online tool that will allow individuals who have experiences experienced incidents of hate to report them. A lot of folks don't think that we have that kind of problem here. That because there's been a few changes in our society, hate doesn't exist anymore. Bias doesn't exist anymore. Racism doesn't exist anymore. We developed this tool allow people to report those incidents, and it can be a fairly minor thing. A name going into a grocery store and not getting served properly, things like that. Being able to record that and provide the data so that we can go back and say, hey, look, we do have these problems. Let's address this. Let's bring this out in the open. Let's have the conversation. Make sure that we can end this problem.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Thompson? Your turn.
So I think that our youth are an answer here on how to start changing the the thoughts in the community. I was able to start a Spokane Valley Youth Voice Group where many youth of color came, many LGBTQ youth came and talked about what they have experienced in their schools as far as even even two of the youth talked about being spit on at their school. Others talked about being afraid to be in school. And I think that as we can give our youth a voice and have the adults understand that this is affecting our youth and how can we not let our children be protected? And we need to come together as a community to make sure that as adults, we step up. As human beings, we treat each other with respect and compassion because we have to share this world. And we need to do it in kindness to one another. And I will continue to be a voice to address that hatred and make sure youth and adults, everyone is safe.
Thank you. And Mr. Wick?
Sure. Sure, what? It's, it's a multifaceted thing that we need to continue to do. It's building that tolerance and understanding of each other. I think one of the things that we've tried to do here lately is, is to help cover up the graffiti. And the messaging, so that way it's not propagated out there. I know there's been a couple of weekends where I've gone over and and tried to cover up graffiti or. Or take it down just myself, anything that we can do to help kind of mitigate that, so that it's not being propagated or continued and expanded, but coming to an understanding. Again, I, I know it's probably a little lighthearted, but Taco Tuesdays, right? Or we're finding ways to come together and get to know and understand different cultures and getting to know each other is is the big thing. We need to bring back the neighborhoods and community and. For everybody.
All right, thank you. The next question from the audience. To sustain our streets in the valley, there are several on council that have raised the idea of a utility tax. Do you agree or disagree? And how would you advocate to maintain, to maintain our streets? We'll start with you, Ms. Thompson.
So at this time, and I have voted in the last two years to move general funds uh, to our street preservation. Uh, fund to cover that deficit from the telephone tax. Um, I think that we have got to live within our budget right now and see where we're going to come out of, out as we come out of this uh. Pandemic effects of the pandemic. Our, our citizens, I do, I do not feel need to have any more taxes at this time. We can live within our budget and I'm waiting to hear what our committee who is working on this issue has to say. And think about how we do have alternatives if we, if there's something else we could do rather than put more burden on our citizens.
Okay, and Mr. Wick?
Sure, we, so we know on our streets that every dollar we invest in maintenance and preservation, we save up to eight dollars in the future from how to rebuild the road. But we need to be making those investments wise. How can we put more into maintenance and preservation? So we've actually stopped. Reconstructions of any road unless we get another grant. So if there's, if it's gone to the point of needing to be rebuilt. We can't afford that at this time. So it's focus on those that we can maintain or save before they fall into disrepair. Um, but we've been focusing a lot on grinding over lakes, which is where we grind off the top portion because. The thing that we're trying to do is prevent the water from getting into the base. And so we've been grinding off and putting more asphalt down. But there's other lower cost alternatives. It's called surface treatments or emulsions and different technology that we can use. It's working with like the city of Vancouver where they're hiring contractors that come through our area to do that kind of work and how we can best partner together with others for that. Um, the street sustainability committee is another good example of that. Looking forward to hearing their recommendations from what the community wants to see as well. That's where we were able to put thirty people together for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mr. Johnson.
That's, it's interesting how uh, when the council members who have been in favor of the utility tax in the past are asked about it now, they say that move. I haven't been in favor of the utility tax. Utility tax is about the worst choice in my opinion. Uh, it's almost the same as a B and O tax. Um, and it really hits our fixed income neighbors. It's, it's just not, it wouldn't be the right choice if we absolutely had to do a tax. Plus, the people don't get to weigh in on it. It doesn't go to the vote for, to the vote of the public. Any kind of tax increase would have to go to the vote of their public, or I could never even come close to. To uh, being in favor of it. But I'm also in agreement with what Linda was saying and Mayor Wick. Um, right now, we've got the money to do what we need to. We do need to find the more efficient solutions. Um, but we do not need to, in my opinion, add another tax to our citizens at all.
Okay, we have two more questions. So the next question. If spending on public safety was reinvested into our other public priorities. What opportunities or big dreams for Spokane Valley could be possible? Mr. Johnson, we'll start with you.
Well, again, I, I, I'm not sure. You know, I realize that a large part of our budget is used on public safety. But the city of Spokane Valley was set up to be an extremely efficient form of government. Uh, being a contract city uh, saves us a tremendous amount of money. I realize that it may seem as if um. We spend maybe too much money on public safety, but I think when you look at per capita, we're in pretty good shape in that aspect. What big dreams for Spokane Valley would be possible? You know, I've lived here my whole life. It would have been great to have. The Appleway couplet all the way through. I see big time traffic problems, but now we have a fantastic trail. Let's make sure that we finish our parks. Let's make sure that we link our trails as best we can. Um, if we're going to have big dreams, let's start shooting for that. But really, uh, it's difficult for me to see any kind of reduction in public safety expenditures.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Thompson, same question.
So one of the great opportunities I have right now is I am one of twenty elected officials across the nation. Who is working on a special task force called reimagining public safety in our nation. And uh, that is led by Mayor Baraka. Who, I forgot the name of his city, but he's out of New, New Hampshire, and they have done incredible work with uh, interceptors. Uh, violence interceptors. It's, it's a prevention effort of those who are in the neighborhoods. Um, supporting our law enforcement with just volunteering and connecting people. I also believe so strongly in prevention. And reducing those risk factors that put our youth and and intern adults at risk for prom behavior. So. How do we invest in prevention to make sure that everyone has the best education, best opportunities and can fulfill their potential? Because that is where we can reduce the criminal activity, the violence in our community.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mr. Wick, final. Um, do you need me to repeat the question or you?
I'm good. Okay, so, so I think we can do both. And in the last two years, we've been, it's been very exciting. We've been able to look at opportunities that come to our city. In my mind, we have a great opportunity called Bridging the Valley and how we can accomplish that, which is. We're going to do grade separations on the Burlington Northern Track on the main line that connects Chicago to the coast. And then the UP line or Union Pacific would move into that corridor. And we'd eliminate a major barrier that bisects our city from east to west. That would be huge for our community. We have an option where we bought forty-six acres along the river at Flora. We're talking about a river loop trail where we have pedestrian bridges on both sides of our city. And create another Sentinel Trail in the north bank of the river. That would drive tremendous amounts of tourism and increase our economy and bring more jobs and money into our community. We're talking about sports where we built sixteen sand volleyball courts at Brown's Park. How can we continue that and bring more abilities and opportunities for our community, not only for our youth or sports, but. Also the reduced travel and also more tourism impact. We have a lot of great opportunities. Thank you.
Okay, all right. And the final question is actually directed to a Mr. Wick. Um, I will read that question. A recent article reported that you requested a hundred and seventy thousand of dollars of funding for another law enforcement officer. For homelessness outreach. Could this funding be better spent on social workers or mental health workers instead?
Sure, so the, the article was, was halfway correct. We actually asked for two hundred and forty thousand. So that was a fund that is generated from documentary recording fees in our community. That generates about six hundred thousand dollars. Right now, we've given up all rights as a council. That goes to the county. So we're asking for two hundred and forty thousand of that to come back to our community and be specific. Um, while it did include an officer, because we, our police department came to us and said, we could be more efficient. If we had one officer that could focus on homeless situations and outreach and being more of a point of contact with them. So we included that request. The other half is for nonprofits in my mind. It's for homeless outreach services to continue to expand what Ariel Anderson has been able to do as our housing homeless coordinator. But it's not saying it's a dedicated position. We're trying to develop that as a partnership for nonprofits and how they could help to do that role. Thanks Snap does that for the county, but there might be another partner, whether it's Valley Partners that do that for our local community, but. That is our goal with those dollars. We're trying to bring those back to our, our community.
Okay. Next, we have our closing statements. Each candidate has two minutes to make a closing statement. And the order of responses will be Mr. Johnson, Ms. Thompson, and Mr. Wick. Mr. Johnson, you're up first.
All right, thank you having me here this morning. In closing, I'd like to let you know about some upcoming Spokane Human Rights Champions Awards, but you know what? I, th- this is what I was going to say. Um, but I'm going to jump to a couple of things. First of all, one of the questions that we had this morning was about conflict under the council. When Councilmember Thompson first brought Reel to the uh, council, there were some comments made by council members. Were completely inappropriate. A couple of weeks later, if you want to check the record, you'll find that I spoke up against those comments. And called them out for what they were, racial bias. When we have an opportunity to speak up. When we have an opportunity to get involved, when it is the right time to say, whoa, sir, you're wrong. We need to have people in the, there's a responsibility who are willing to do so. I believe that I'm one of those people. Get back to what I was going to say. Um. Spokane uh, Spokane County Human Rights Task Force has been doing the Spokane Human. Uh, Rights Champions Awards. We got the second year coming up. Um, last year, we recognized people like Sandy Williams of Blacklands, Reverend Walter Kendricks. But Carl Maxi Center represented or re-honored Doris D. Daniels. For work in the Maltese community, Leanna Rep's ongoing fight for Native American neighbors and. The Hispanic Business Professional Association and Smith Barbieri Progressive Fund for the work that they've done in our community. We've got another, the twenty twenty-one uh, Spokane Human Rights Champions Awards will be live streamed on November sixth at six o'clock. And I hope everyone keeps their eye open for notifications on how to view that. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And I too, thank you for having us today. Uh, I am a lifelong learner on cultural diversity, inclusion, and my own journey of, of, of knowing who I am. And I, I have to just thank those who have been some of my greatest teachers, Jin Lin Wu, who is a, who has worked with native uh, communities on historical trauma. Uh, Tony Lodge, a fierce native woman who taught me about how uh, youth. Uh, are affected in our community just because they are native youth and they're a high percentage of them in trouble. Uh, and, and Frieda Gandy, Diane Jackson, who uh, took me to Costco twenty years ago when they were selling. Uh, baby dolls, the white dolls had sundresses on and the, the black dolls had monkey pajamas on and we got those dolls pulled from Costco. Um. I just uh. I am constantly learning. It is hard, hard for me to watch when citizens are not valued because of the color of their skin or the way they worship. And um, I just want to end with, one of my greatest teachers is my son-in-law, Jack Claros, who has been stopped four times for, as he calls, driving brown. That should never happen. And he lives in the, they live in the Portland area, married to my daughter, couldn't have picked a finer husband for her, but anyway, that's, that, I love Jack. Anyway, um. That should never happen in our community that someone is pulled over because of the color of their skin and questioned if that is really their own car they are driving. These are, things are happening in our regions. We have to think about the murder of George Floyd. We have to speak up. We have to be. Uh, vigilant in our advocacy for inclusion and. Uh, please know that I am always open to learning. Please tell me if I need to know something more. Um, and, and call on me because I will be someone who is fierce in my statements of inclusion and. I'm so grateful for all of you for holding this today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson. And finally, Mr. Wick.
Sure, again, thank you for putting these uh, conversations together and getting that information out there. Oftentimes we get overlooked as the city Spokane Valley is, is to our involvement and opportunities to talk to the people. We have a, a great city. We have virtually no debt as a community. We're the eighth or tenth largest city, depending on what census information you look at. Uh, with over a hundred and two thousand a population, yet we have a staff of less than a hundred employees. So it, it limits us in some regards as to being out there in the community. So I just want to say that. We're, we're here. We want to be involved. We want to find out issues and understand how we can make a difference for the community. Uh, and I welcome any kind of conversations, whether. Uh, today or in the future, if you have an issue, please bring it up so we can talk about it and understand more and how we can help impact that. As well as uh, encourage people to vote. November second is coming around the corner. Ballots come out next week, so. I appreciate you tuning in and watching and spending the time today to get to know your candidates and encourage you to please turn in your ballots by November second. And if you haven't registered to vote, there is an opportunity inside City Spokane Valley. You can register on election day at Center Place Regional Event Center. Uh, so that way you can enjoy that opportunity. Thank you again.
Thank you. Um, and I'd like to acknowledge that um, Ms. Pam Haley and Mr. Brandon did confirm that they were going to attend today. But unfortunately did not make it on this uh, call. And uh, Ben Wick pretty much did my job for me and um. And our community service in stating that um. On our information on voting ballots drop in is mid-September, mid-October, so keep an eye out on your mailboxes. If you haven't registered to vote yet, it, that's, that's okay. Um, in Washington State, you're eligible to register online or by mail by October twenty-fifth. But you can register in person up to eight PM on election day, um, which is Tuesday, November second. All right. And to find Dropbox um, information, scan the QR code on the screen with your phone or go to www.sokancounty.org. And I'll give a few seconds for people who might want to open their cameras and scan that QR code. I know it's kind of awkward, but technology is, is fun. All right, well, on behalf of the Spokane Coalition of Color. I want to thank the candidates who have joined us this morning as well as many volunteers for making this all possible. Thank you to all of you in the audience and taking time to engage in our democratic process. By making an effort to be more informed about citizens. Follow us on Facebook for future candidate forums and initiatives at Spokane Coalition of Color. Or scan the QR code on the screen with your phone. This concludes our candidate forum. Thank you again for joining us and don't forget, please go out and vote.